Welcome to the Waterloo City Council Special Session. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowson?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Wilder? She's not online, but she will be online. And then Mr. Foyce.
Here. I have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to open the hearing on proposed property tax levy for fiscal year 2025.
Do we need to approve in minutes?
They're not on here.
No minutes today. Thank you, though. All right, I have a motion. May I have a second, please?
I did.
Oh, sorry, missed it. All right, we have a motion and a second to open the hearing. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, we have an open hearing on our property tax levy rate for the fiscal year 2025. If there's anybody that would like to come and speak on this topic, now is your opportunity to do so. Going a second time? All right, seeing nobody?
Motion to adjourn.
No, we got it.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
They are asking for public comment. So this time at this, for this special hearing on the budget, the public is welcome to come up and to the podium and address the council. You'll each be given three minutes to speak.
On the property tax levy. Yep. Did you want to come up and speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Glenn Andrew K., 316 Prospect Boulevard.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. I'm opposed to the property tax increase. I think the money could be spent elsewhere in better ways, and raising the property taxes is not really the best way of doing it, in my point of view. You're doing it to, I believe, and I could be wrong, increase education in the area, which needs to be done, but we need to get better performance from our students. If you can get the grades of the students increased, if you can get the students to be more-
Sir, this is for the city. This isn't for the, this isn't for the school.
Oh.
So.
That wasn't stated.
Well, we're at the city council meeting, so, yeah, yep, this is for the city council.
But the letter we got says 4:30 property taxes.
Yeah, and the city council, yeah, city does have one portion of the property taxes, as does the county and as does the-
That's not at this moment?
The, the school board, like, you would need to speak at the school board meeting, and that is, I believe, they had their tax meeting last week.
Yeah, I was there last week, and this was the same letter that says the same thing for this time.
Okay, why don't you, you can have your, your time and speak, and then we'll just enter it into public comment.
Okay. Well, I think the school system has to reorganize themselves. They have problems with attendance. Other schools have problems with attendance. If they build one school out in the corner of the city property, they'll have higher, higher problems with attendance, because there's a lot of kids that get hassled on the bus. If you have a school that's high school out in the corner, you're going to have more kids on buses for longer periods of time. They're going to have more problems with kids not wanting to go to school. So I think the city of Waterloo should help the school district figure out where they can centrally locate one high school, if that's what they require. We've had two high schools in Waterloo for a long time, and even three at one time. The one that's out on the suburbs, as I call it, the perimeter, has closed down. That's central. Now they want to build another school at central? No. Why don't they find someplace in between East High and West High that might be in the center of the population, which they do have a census of 2020, to look at where the students are and the people are, and the city should look at that census.
Keep going. I interrupted your time.
So that they can identify a location that would be appropriate for the center of the city. I also think that the city hall should be expanded, so that you can have a lot of people attend the meeting, as opposed to a few, and locking off past the back half of the meeting room. Maybe that's difficult to do, but I was very surprised to see the back half locked off. Thanks very much for your considerations, and I hope that you can input to keep the budget where it is. The market's going down, the local area's going down, because there's less money coming in, the farmers that are working, deers laying off. You're going to tax people for more mon- you're asking people with, for more money in a time period where they're going to have less, and I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else that would wish to speak at this time?
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I feel you folks should not have a tax increase at this time. Some of the former speaker's statements are true, the layoffs, the high cost of living, and I think there's money out there that you can gather up. Take some out of these TIFs. Some of these TIFs have a lot of money in them, because every time you want to buy something, oh, there's money in the TIF, we can do that. Start sunsetting some TIFs. Start taking money out of them to run the budget. I know that there's departments running and running well. I know that there's some that are strained for money, but the citizens are strained, strained terribly, I can tell you. We've got lights up and down University Avenue. We just finished it, now we've tore it up again. The middle, the center lane is all tore up. We just keep spending money. Tonight on the agenda, there's some stuff that I'll speak to later. We seem to have all kinds of money for all kinds of projects. Let's hold the costs down on our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments right now? All right, come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
Craig LaFredo, 1128 Ridgemont Road. I got this letter for not only my home, but a business that my wife and I own, and in '21 and '23, our home taxes went up over 41% if I'm looking at my checkbook right, and I got to tell you, I, I'm not even sure what this means. Does this mean that the proposed property taxes are going to go up by, from 45 to 52 million in, in, in total for the city?
That's just the proposed. That's not the, that's not, we're going to have a further discussion later on about that.
In the, is it percentage or millage rate?
No. Bridget, will you answer his question, please?
The tax rate, is that?
So that is your, this tax rate here would be for the city, like, that's the city's portion, so it's not the millage rate, that's the-
A percentage?
That's the total, like, that's $22.41.
Per?
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Could you say that into the microphone?
I just wondered.
Yep, I know. No, no, I know.
So the tax rate that's listed on there is $22.41 and some other change, and that is the total dollar amount. It is not a percentage. So it wouldn't be the millage rate, it would, well, it is a millage rate, but it's, it doesn't take into consideration anything for the TIFs, that kind of stuff.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, I don't, I don't pretend to understand that anyways.
Okay.
So we're raising that by, the proposal, I understand, is to raise the value by eight million and that rate, if I can just use that, by 15.3%. Is that what this is saying?
Yep.
Seems like a lot compared, when it was just over 15% and over 23. I guess, apparently you folks think you need a lot more money, and you must think we have it, and, and we don't, and my guess is that you know that, but this thing here says that I just need to sit down and shut up, so thanks for listening.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. All right, any further conversation going a second time?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
And receive oral and written comments.
Okay, we have a motion to, a motion and a second to receive and file oral and written comments. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, oral comments have been received. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to close the hearing? No. Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
What, eight more minutes and Bridget starts?
Everyone, and welcome to this, um, work session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowson?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Here.
Mr. Childs? Uh, Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
And Mr. Foyce?
Here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, as well as the approval of minutes of the March 18th, 2024 work session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, let's, Bridget.
All right. Good evening. Bridget Wood, I'm the Finance Director. Today I'm going to be going over the, so it says publish budget, which will actually be published after today's meeting for what we're, the published budget will be what was at the proposed levy rates. However, I'll go over today what I think we should certify next meeting, or I guess approve next meeting. So the outline is, again, just a quick review over the published levy rates, and then the proposed certified budget for the next meeting. Uh, the proposed levy rates are broken down, again, into, we have police, fire, debt service, and all other services, with police and fire having 60% of our general fund levy. And then the other, all other is broken down into building inspectors, public works, health and social services, culture and rec, community and economic development, and general government. And so again, the published rate was $22.41, 40, I don't even know how to say that, 41611. That would, would make the non-agricultural change at a 13.85% increase, and then the not, the ag change would actually decrease by 5%. Um, this is just a nice little visual of where your dollar goes. So as, as the end of fiscal '24, 49 cents of your dollar was going to the city of Waterloo, 32 cents was going to the schools, 16 cents to the county, and 3 cents to the other taxing authorities.
Bridget, the slide's unadvancing. Maybe it's me.
Hold on one second.
But it's still on the, uh, okay.
All right, so now, can you see the, the, Linda? It says 2025 proposed? We're good? Okay. Um, so this is the proposed certified budget that I'm recommending for fiscal '25. This would be what would be approved at the next council meeting on the 15th. Um, here shows the differences in where we publish the levy rate to where I think we can sit certified or approve of the next agenda. It decreases the overall rate by 32 cents for, and that's a combination of decreasing all of the current levy, like, the current breakout. And then this shows for the other sections, for the all other services, where those would lie within that 12-cent breakdown. And then this just goes over the difference in what was published for your tax bill and what the, what I believe we should approve next meeting would look like. It would be approximately a total 5% decrease over what was certified in 2024 at a house of $100,000 value. So if your assessed rate is more than $100,000, then this, you'll have to adjust to figure out what your tax rate would be. And again, this also applies to the first $150,000 of businesses. They also would be taxed at the residential rate, which is at that 46%. So instead of a 13.8% increase, it would be a 12.11% increase in the total change for non-agricultural taxes, and then ag still is at that 5.75% decrease. That didn't change. So then the breakdown of where the money would be going, per se. We've got personnel increases, which are primarily contractual due to our bargaining unit contracts. So we've got pay and increases, overtime, payroll taxes, all of that at 2.1 million, 75,000 in fire department overtime for military, health insurance increases, and police and fire pension increases, for a total of 3.1 million in personnel. Our non-personnel changes, most of these had revenues that matched thems. There was a total of $87,000 increase in expenses that did not have matching revenues to go along with them. So here I have it listed out for grant-funded expenses, liability, insurance, work comp, sidewalk expenses, and airport expenses are all ones that had larger amounts. The other expenses is a net of a combination of multiple departments. The revenue changes are for the ambulance transport, which just started this year, ATE revenue going up, airport revenue increasing due to increased lease fees for the, I think it's with American Airlines, they got that lease updated. Clerk and Finance revenue, which includes interest, uh, fun, or interest, interest revenue as law, as well as credit union, it's a credit union franchise fee, and then sidewalk assessments and other increases for grants and fees. Again, that's a net of a combination of different departments increases, such as leisure and, um, there's actually like four different increases for leisure services in different departments. So the total net change, we're not using fund balances here for the general fund. We will be using 250,000 out of the library levy that is remaining from the prior levy that was separate. from the prior levy that was separate to help fund or offset some of their personnel increases, since they are part of the general fund this year. Um, otherwise, there is no other, um, well, we also are using a hundred thousand in the insurance liability line that we use for, uh, for a hundred thousand for the, that fund balance. Otherwise, there's no actual, no other general fund, fund balance being used. Um, so, as you can see from this slide, it nets out to a four point eight pers- uh, four point eight million dollar increase for that, and if we include the debt service in there, it's a six point three million dollar increase in our budget. So, next couple of slides just go over how our certain, uh, funds used, uh, for our capital projects funds. Most of this is relating to fiber, as, that'll probably be for the next couple of years, that the capital projects will be fiber-related. But this breaks it down into how the different one, how it's funded, or where the fun, or actually where the expenses are lying. So if it's in the TIF, or if it's airport, or parks, um, that's how it breaks down. For the sewer fund, um, it's a, let's see here. My notes, I don't know if I updated them, sorry. Uh, but they have approximately thirty-one million dollars in projects that are going to be, um, happening in the next year. So that could be, some of that's fiber-related, again, and some of that is just regular SRF projects with their, their stations and other, like, um, cure and place pipe updates. The stormwater fund budget, that one, um, has a slight increase over fiscal twenty-four. It's relating to the match for the bridges and for some other SRF-related projects. The sanitation fund budget, um, it is a, an increase of around four hundred and ninety thousand dollars from last year's budget. Looks like most of it had to do with increases in, um, recycling and collection services, as well as increased motor vehicle and equipment costs. And the increases for personnel. Uh, the road use tax fund budget, that one, there's an increase of about one point three million in that budget this year. Most of it, again, has to do with bridge expenses and increased commodities costs. The local option fund budget, this one has an increase of six point five million. Most is related to the Laporte Road and some bridge project expenses. Uh, the federal block grant, which also could be known as community development grant, um, block grant, they have an increase of about two point eight million. Um, and most of that has to do with some of their, they have a new, uh, federal grant coming in this next year. Uh, federal housing, their, uh, budget has an increase of six hundred and six thousand dollars. And again, that's mainly from, um, increased housing assistant payments that they have been getting, um, for HUD and Section Eight. And that's it. Any questions?
All right, council? Well, a continuation of, uh, good work by you and your team and all of the departments, um, so, appreciate your efforts. If, if no other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to close the, or to adjourn, sorry.
Second.
The motion you made was second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.